Are you happy if we make a start? Okay, it's three minutes past, which is about as late as I can cope with. No mai, hara mai, kiara katoa, katoa. Called Jennifer Parker, talko ingu. My name's Jennifer Parker. I'm the Deputy Electoral Officer at Wellington and it's my pleasure to welcome you here to the Candidates Briefing today. With me is the Chief Executive, Matt Prosser, our Electoral Officer, Warwick Lamp, who you'll hear from in a minute and is doing most of this presentation, and also the fantastic team that make up some of our Elections Team that'll be delivering these elections. I just wanted to begin with a karakia and then take you through the emergency procedures, just in case anything bad happens. We do live in Wellington, so it's always a good idea. And then I'll throw to Warwick. So, "Fakataka te hau ki te uru, fakataka te hau ki te tonga, ki a ma'a kina kina ki üta, ki a ma'a taratara ki tae. Hehe'a ki ana te atakura, he ti'o, he huka, he ho'ahu, tihei māori'ora." Kiara katoa. In the event of an alarm, please beware if there is an earthquake, please drop cover and hold. Hopefully your tamareke've taught you how to do that well now. If there is a fire emergency, there are lifts, and that you probably came up, on either side of those other stairs. So the staff and the floor wardens will take you down should we need to. We go all the way to the bottom and then assemble to the buildings to the north and south of here on the terrace. And remember, if we do need to evacuate, please leave your bags and anything else here so that we can just look after the people. If you need a bathroom, there are bathrooms in the stairwell on north and south of the lift. The ladies is on the far side, the gentlemen's is here, and there is multi-use toilet on this level as well. I'm now going to invite Warwick Lamp to come up and to take you through our slides and provide an opportunity for us here to say hello in a minute. Thanks, Warwick.
Kiara katoa. Morning, everyone. As Jennifer said, my name is Warwick Lamp. I'm from a company called Elections.com, so I'm external to council. I've got a presentation to scoot through here today. I've got about 50 slides, PowerPoint. I love PowerPoint. And I'm gonna read every slide very slowly. Not, all right? It's not going to be death by PowerPoint. Normally takes about an hour without questions, so keen to take questions as we go. I want you to make sure you go away with all of your questions answered about council election, election process, election land. Chocky, free chocky biscuit for the first question. Happy to get some questions going as we go. Okay, so as I said, my name's Warwick Lamp, external to council. Jennifer is the Deputy Electoral Officer who looks after the council elections on the ground. Jennifer and her team are the ones that look after nominations, orange voting bins, special votes, and all the things that happen in the council. And Amelia over here is the Deputy Deputy Electoral Officer. And in my case, I do lots of elections, lots of council elections. Sorry, you might notice that I'm not too good on lecterns. Normally when I do these presentations, I like to wander around, but tricky with a microphone and sign language interpreters today, so I'll do my best to stay in the one spot. Okay, as you see, I work for lots of councils, 47 in total. Our company is based in Christchurch. I live in Toorongar. I come from Martin. Anybody here who hasn't been to Martin? Well, you're in for a treat when you go there. So as a result, I've been around the block a bit, done lots and lots of council elections. I tried to work it out the other day, I think I've done about 900 council elections and by-elections. And I've done this presentation about 300 times. I've dealt with lots of candidates, I've got lots of stories, lots of war stories from elections, and I've got a pretty good Porky's radar. So when people are dealing with me, I can normally smell a rat from a malai. Be straight up with me because you're gonna get a straight bat back. I do get asked a bit about why aren't the Electoral Commission doing council elections? Why is a private provider doing them? And the simple answer is, it's not in Electoral Commission's wheelhouse. They only do parliamentary elections, and for our elections, just provide us with the preliminary and the final electoral rolls. Electoral Commission has no jurisdiction or say over council elections. There's no point anybody going to them to ask questions about that. So I'll just refer you back to me. Same with the Ombudsman. The Ombudsman in his legislation is Electoral Officer and council elections are specifically excluded. So once again, there's no point anyone going to the Ombudsman to ask a question around how the process works or decisions that I may make as a electoral officer. Similar with La Goima. I'm a private company, private provider, separate from council, external. I don't deal with information requests. Having said that, our election process is entirely transparent. It's all in the public domain. There's no conspiracy theories involved. It's all open. If you wanna know anything, you just ask me and I'll take it. Most of our stuff is on our website, updated all the time. It's all out in the open. But what I do do is answer to a district court judge. You know, recounts, petitions for inquiry, that's the only person that can direct an electoral officer. So what's La Guaman all about? Before we go there, Matt, you wanna say a few words?
Good morning, everybody. I've also been involved in elections for a very long time, but not in this country. So it's quite an interesting exercise for me, having come from the UK where I was responsible for elections, and it's quite a privilege not to be and to allow Warwick to do his work. So for those of you who haven't met me, my name's Matt Prosser, Chief Executive of Wellington City Council. It's a privilege to be the Chief Executive here, been in post about four months. And it's also a privilege to operate within a democracy, which is what we operate within. And you all have the privilege and the ability to stand in these local elections, to represent your communities, potentially on the city council. It's not easy. I can see a couple of current councillors sitting at the back, or three of them at the back, and I'm sure they will tell you and share with you their stories of what it's been like to be a councillor on the city council, the highs, the lows, the truths, everything. Sorry?
Magical.
Magical, there we go, that's a great word. I just wanted to say hello really, because I'm gonna have to disappear off to a conference today, Local Government New Zealand, which is the body that represents all of the councils and comes together where we can find consensus to lobby other organisations and the government. But just to encourage you, if you haven't already, to read the Local Election Report, but perhaps more importantly, the Candidate Handbook, which is a lot of great information and advice. And it's lovely to see somebody I recognise on the front cover of this, my colleague from the library upstairs who works in the organisation, smiling out as she does to me in the organisation. Do read this, ingest this, the team here are really good and they want to help you in terms of running for this city council. And then the Pre-Election Report, 90 pages. It's not a short read, I recognise that, but we're a big organisation, we deliver a lot of services, and this gives you some, but not all of the information that you would need should you become a city councillor. So I just wanted to wish you well with the campaign. I know there's gonna be a lot of shoes gone through as you're out walking through this wonderful city, a lot of time spent talking to people, listening to people, understanding the challenges and the concerns of residents of the city, that will then help you should you become elected as part of the city council. So I'm gonna say thank you very much indeed, good to see you. And I'm gonna disappear and leave you in the capable hands... Where's he gone? He was behind me for a second. It's not a pantomime. I'm gonna leave you in the capable hands of Warwick and Jen for the rest of the time. Good to see you. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for the plug about the Candidate Handbook as well. I agree. Important reading, please make sure you read the handbook, cover to cover, and digest the important parts. I'm gonna cover most of it in this presentation, but it goes into some of those things in a lot more detail. All right, what's La Guaman about? Most of you know about this, but we'll talk about a few things. It is a big business. It's a complex business with lots of pieces of legislation that have an impact on what council does. And those there are the high-level things that council does. Pretty straightforward, you know all about that. What are we talking about? 1,900 council employees, lots of different activities, big, complex business. And as a result, standing for council is a big deal. It's not a five-minute job. Important responsibility, big positive thing to do for a community to be the eyes and ears, sit around the council table and make big picture strategic decisions about things that go forward in the council. Quite often, big, complex, intergenerational equity, intergenerational decisions about infrastructure, all those sorts of things that you'll be aware of. But quite a bit of that's set out in the Candidate Handbook. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that it's not always a bed of roses. A lot of talk these days about, you know, public safety, candidate safety. So just be aware of these things, you'll know a bit about it anyway. Social media is an interesting space, sometimes can get a little bit gnarly as a candidate. Don't be surprised if you attract some attention. Maybe in your campaigning space, think about having an email address that's not your normal personal email. Maybe use a burner phone with a different phone number from what you would normally use. Think about those things, yeah. Going to events, check out where the exits are, work out your de-escalation point, those things if you felt your safety was compromised. And always, of course, at the end of the day, you can always go to the police if you're that concerned about where things might be headed. Just a point there, along those lines, in our process, we don't make candidates' home addresses available during the election process publicly. So we don't put candidates' address that's on the nomination paper on the internet. It's not in the candidate contact list. Talk a little bit about that later. So as elected members, these are the key things that elected members do. You know, governance, not management, strategy, not potholes. And remember that elected members employ just one person, Matt, the CEO. And Matt then looks after the 1,900-odd council staff. Here's some key competencies that are handy to have, not essential, but when you're elected member, there's lots and lots of reading, big council agendas, pretty good at speed reading is handy, working out the issues involved in reports and getting to the nub of complex issues. Listening skills, deal with a wide range of people, eyes and ears of the city, handy to have some experience in that. And thinking citywide, even though you might be elected from a ward, you're there to think on behalf of the whole city when making these big decisions around the council table. Public speaking skills, yeah, handy but not essential. Once you've been around the council table for a few months, you soon pick up those public speaking skills pretty quick. And as you can see, you know, a time-consuming job with lots of hours. Mayor's pretty much full-time, and councillors in Wellington City pretty much as well. Lots of meetings. Thursday's the council meetings day, but lots of other committee meetings, workshops, representing council on other committees, going to events, particularly even outside work hours, and then lots and lots of reading agendas. Jennifer, all elected members provided with a laptop?
Laptop and phone.
Laptop and phone? So all agendas electronic? Nothing printed out? Okay, save the trees, nothing printed out, everything electronic. So what, agendas go out basically a week before the council meeting?
Yeah, they do. A week, seven days, which is kind of like to have. And they, yeah, there's a knowledge management system, document management system, so it's easy to mark up the agenda sections or what...
So all elected members would get their agenda with a weekend in between to read it before the next council meeting?
Yeah, so Thursday meeting, the agenda goes out on Thursday almost always, unless it's a massive thing, as we let people know if there were delays. But we do that, and then there's a process where any questions that anyone has on their agenda can provide those answers back ahead of time. Any more questions, live in the meetings, making sure that everybody's got the information that they need, do their job for them.
Great, thank you. All right, there's the remuneration that the REM Authority has set for the council. Remember, elected members are not council employees. Gotta look after your own tax, ACC, some of those allowances there as well. And the REM Authority has also recently announced that it is an option for elected members to have some help with home security. There's an amount, I think it's four and a half thousand, that elected members upon a risk assessment can have access to to help with putting in security at home if it was thought to be an issue. Okay, get on to talking about the election process. So my job, in accordance with the legislation, it's pretty prescriptive, the Act and regulations, it's all about making sure it's a level playing field for everyone, between incumbents, those that aren't incumbents, the whole deal. But what I don't do is get involved in the campaigning space. Not interested in the politics, not interested in what candidates might say about each other, not interested in stuff that happens on social media. I have a sphere of caring. Campaign, candidates bickering about each other is outside that. So don't complain to me if someone says something on social media that you don't like, I don't And here is a slide with the key dates. Lock these away, very important, the timetable's in the handbook. Jennifer, these slides will go up on council's website afterwards?
Yes, they will, sorry. Somebody just pointed out that I wasn't on the mic before. Yes, they will be on the council website, on the Elections page.
Excellent. And this is being livestreamed as well, of course. Welcome to those in livestream land. If you do have any questions on livestream, and I think you can file those in and you'll let me know? Okay, all right, I'll do them on the fly. Anyway, here's the key dates. Couple of changes from last time. Of course, nominations are open, close Friday, 1st of August, slightly shorter nomination period than previous because the voting period has been extended by 10 days. Voting period now just over one month, 9 September, 11 October. So those voting papers will be out there longer than what they had been previously. And of course, now the key date there is when signs can go up. We'll talk about signs a bit later on, my most favourite topic, not, but part of the deal. Signs up on 29th of August on public land, and then down the day before. Okay, nomination process, you'll know what these elections are for Wellington City. And out to the right-hand side there are the number of electors in those specific elections. I think last time we're just over 40% return, no, 45% return last time. Hopefully we can get to that again this time. But yeah, those are the numbers as to what they are. SDV, ranking candidates, remember, on the voting documents, all elections, candidates' names are in random order. Print it on the fly, so within your household, you and your other household members, the order of candidates will be different, completely different. And this time round, we've got two Marty Ward polls. So in this case, it'll be election of mayor, ward, in the community ward, if you're in a nearby area, and then Marty Ward poll. Come back in a sec, Ben. Marty Ward poll, then GW's election, then GW's Marty Ward poll. Ben? Yes, that's right, correct. Yep, well spotted. Thank you. My deliberate typo, see if anyone was noticing. And he does get a chocolate, he does get a chocolate fish, yeah. So Marty Ward polls, you know a bit about these, you know, it's the government that said it's gotta be done, binding on council for the period 2028 to 2034, not 2025 to 2028. So in this election, there will be a Marty Ward councillor elected for both the city council and GW in place for the next three years until the outcome of the poll determines that. Everyone gets to vote for that. Okay? And that there is the wording that's going to be on the voting papers. I vote to keep or I vote to remove the Marty Ward. Any questions about that? Okay. All right, let's talk about the nomination process. You get sick of me saying this, nominations have opened but close Friday, 1st of August 12 noon. Please do not leave lodging your nominations till the last minute. Shall I repeat that? Please do not leave lodging your nominations till the last minute. 50% of our candidates usually bring it in in the last 48 hours, but I urge you to do that earlier. Because if you do leave it till the last minute and there's something wrong, and you haven't got time to get it fixed by midday, you're not a candidate. Happens just about every time. I've had many stories of high-profile candidates who've done lots of advertising beforehand, promoting themselves, rock up quarter to 12 on the last day, and their nominator's not on the roll, haven't got time to fix it, not a candidate. Okay? No, so the cutoff time is absolute, so 12 noon on Friday, 1st of August. Oh, sure. Yep, yeah, that's fine, as long as it's corrected by midday on that day. So to take that a bit further, if you are bringing it in the last minute and you walk into the council building at 2 minutes to 12, if you're inside the door in the foyer, when Jennifer is down there listening to the pips on the national program at 11:59, 59 and 1, if you're in the door, no problem. Jennifer and her team will process that nomination. And if it's all good, sweet, you're a candidate. If there's something wrong with it, nominator's not on the roll, senator's not on the roll, you're not a candidate. Same if you're doing it electronically. We're keen on electronic nominations. Last time, we had about 80% of nominations sent by email, that's our preference. And there's the email address to go to. But just remember, same deal applies, it's not the time that you send it that matters, it's the time that it hits the inbox, that inbox. So don't do what someone did in Toorongar last year for their election and sent their nomination in by email at 11:58 AM. Time it goes through cyber security, council's email server, all that palaver, turned up 12:01 in the inbox, too late. You know, when we send an email, it doesn't get there straight away. So make sure you give enough time for the world to do its thing and your email to turn up, because if it is after 11:59, 59 and 1, you're not a candidate. Yep? Yeah, the question was if you, if you find an error in your profile and you want to change it, you can change that before midday, yes, but I'm going to expand on that a bit more because the process for that has changed slightly. I'll expand on this in a minute. You've got to provide evidence in your own citizenship. Passport, birth certificate, citizenship certificate, doesn't matter if the passport's expired, we just want to see evidence that you are a New Zealand citizen. Keen on $200 deposit electronically, but want evidence of the transaction receipt. You know, screenshot or PDF that comes out of the banking system so that Jennifer and her team can find it in council's bank account. Got to be paid by 12 noon on that last day, not after. Can use your commonly used name on the voting paper, doesn't have to be your legal name, but on the nomination paper, we do want you to write your full name on it so that we can find you on the electoral roll and verify it. But on the voting paper, you can have whatever name you are known by. Be a nickname, can be, you know, Dave instead of David, Marty instead of Martin, Edward, Ted. Or nickname, I've got an elected member in Ruapahu whose nickname is Rabbit. He has Rabbit on the voting paper because that's who everyone knows him by. No problem, yeah, maiden name, just whatever works for you, that you're known by. And of course, most of you be aware, you can have a party affiliation, like an affiliation slogan, tagline, can be a political party. Labour Greens, Act, New Zealand First, that sort of stuff. If you are going under the party banner, then I need and have got at the moment a list from those political parties of candidates who are entitled to use that endorsement. But a slogan, pretty much anything you like. You can go on to council's website now and have a look at the nominations that are received and you can see the affiliations that people have. Independent, duly independent, always completely and utterly independent. Believe in better, more democracy, less bureaucracy, rates control, cheap rates, whatever you like. It's just got to be less than 38 characters, including spaces. And we check that because thirty-eight characters, thirty-eight characters is the space that we've got to print it on the voting paper. I'll show you what this looks like soon. In addition, on a nomination paper, you have to state if you are standing in other elections. Of course, you can stand as many elections as you like. Stand for the mayor, stand for the ward, stand for the community board. Stand for another council if you want to. It's a guy at the top of the south, last time he stood for the mayoralty in six councils. $200, $200, $200, $200, every time. Six profile statements on each of his nomination papers, he had to state, I am standing in all the other councils. Okay, he came last in everyone, but he could and he did. So you can stand as many times as you like, you don't have to live in the area, you can live in Auckland and stand here, you live in Porro and stand here. That's no problem, just that your nominator and second to have to be on the roll in the area that you're standing. Those two pieces are printed at the top of the profile statement, I'll show you what that looks like in a minute, not part of the 150 words. So you don't need to write in your profile statement, I am standing for other elections and my principal place of residence is. We do that automatically, you can use that space for your other words. Okay? Here's the nomination paper that's in on the website, copies around, make sure you grab it. Second side there has the details of where you send the email to in the middle and the bank account details of where you pay your $200 deposit for each position. So I said before, got to be New Zealanders and nominating, they have to be on the roll in the area that you're standing. Can't stand for more than one ward though. One ward, community board, mayor. If you're standing for the Marty Ward, you don't have to be on the Marty roll and vice versa, but your nominator and second to do. And of course, you can't change your mind after the close of nominations. Can change your mind and withdraw before the close of nominations, but not after. And one key point there is the $25,000 limit thing, if you or your partner has a contract with council, then you need to get prior approval before you're a candidate to meet the law, mayor rules. To do that, go to the audit office website, they've got lots of information on there about it, there's criteria to meet. You have to do that before you put in your nomination. Not, can't be done retrospectively. Onus is on the candidate to get that sorted. So if you think you're in that situation, then you need to work on it pretty quick. So I said, you can't change your mind, happens every time. Monday after close nominations, I get calls from people going, oh, I've looked at the other candidates, I don't want to be in the election anymore. Can I withdraw? No, you can't. You can stay in and do a don't vote for me campaign if you want to, but my experience, sometimes they backfire. But you can withdraw on the grounds of medical incapacity. Same rules as the parliamentary elections, a few hoops to jump through. You know, I had a case a few years ago where a lady put a nomination in early and then the day before nominations closed, had a stroke. Following week, a medical team contacted me and said she wouldn't be capable of carrying on if she was elected. Can we go through this process? Yep, sure. Got to be signed by a doctor and nominated second and a JP, but all good. Actually, that reminds me, the, I've had this question a bit about evidence in New Zealand citizenship. Those documents doesn't need to be certified by JP, don't need to worry about getting it signed by anyone, just a copy of your documents. Okay, profile statements, 150 words, not 151. Why is it words not characters? In the profile statement, a space isn't counted, so there's just words. Like a web address, one word, phone number, one word, Facebook link, one word. But candidates get creative and try and hyphen words that shouldn't be hyphenated. And I gladly unhyphen them. Normal convention applies. But you know, people come up with interesting acronyms, that's okay. Word is a word. But no numbers, no bullets, no caps, no bolding, no speech marks, no fancy formatting, just straight good text about you as a candidate and what you're standing for. Not about someone else, not about another candidate, not about council CE, not about the electoral officer. Just nice, simple profile statement about yourself and what you're standing for. Yeah, good questions. The question was if it's 152 words, what do we do? So two things, so normally, if it was, if it was 151, 152, I would look at it and do the I am to I'm, I have to I've and try and sneak it under 150 and then let you know. But if it was, you know, 10 words over and I couldn't do that, then I'd come back and say, have another crack and give you time to do that. And it doesn't matter if that was after the close of nominations, it's just before I sign it off to go to print. But this time around, slightly different process. Two things. You might have already noticed, when people put in their nominations now, and you can go to the council website and see this, our process, once it's confirmed, publishes those details on council's website straight away. And so it's candidate's name, affiliation and phone or email, not physical address. So those details are up there now for Wellington City Council. Jennifer, remind me how many nominations you got up there already? Wasn't it something like that, maybe 10? Six, I think. So those details are there now, you can go to that link, there's a link back to our elections.com website that shows all of the councils around the country we work for and all of the nominations. We've got about 220 across the country so far, we're expecting about two and a half thousand. So yes, candidate's name, affiliation, mobile or email, not physical address, so that's up there now. We haven't done that before, it's a new feature this time, so the contact details are there, ready to go straight away and people can access that and contact you. At the same time, once the profile and photo has been checked and entered and ready to go, we then send each candidate a PDF of what that's going to look like. You haven't had this before. It's a feature we're providing to give US candidates a chance to check that we've got it right and you've got it right. It's however, not a chance for you to rewrite the profile. It's a chance for you to check the key details, is the name spelt right? Is it in the right election, always helps? Have we got the right photo with the right person and is the affiliation as you expected it to be? And then the profile. Now, sure, you know, if there was a few words you want to tinker in the profile, that's okay, best endeavours basis, if we've got time, we'll do that. But we're not keen on entertaining a full rewrite. So you're going to get the opportunity to do that, sooner you get your nomination in, get it checked and all that stuff and then the sooner you get that back and the more time you'll have to look at it. That's why I encourage you to not leave it till the last minute and get your nominations in early. Yeah? Yeah. Yep. Yep. Yep, good question. So the question was, translations, how's that work? And what's the turnaround time from when we, when we send a PDF? The turnaround time, it depends on how clean the photo and the profile is. If there's no issues with it, it's already under 150 words and it's easy to do, then 24 hours, we'll send the PDF back to you after the nomination name and details have been published on council's website. Now, sure, you know, if you're sending it in last week, you know, we're going to get a lot of these at the same time, so that time pressure might be, might move a bit, but it will happen. If you send your nominations in electronically and you haven't actually had a response or you haven't seen on the council's website within a few hours or by the end of the day, then ring up Jennifer and her team to check that A, they've received it and B, that it's in the process. Okay? Because sometimes when you send emails, you know, you might type the address incorrectly in it, might go somewhere else that you don't know about, so check that out. But yes, pretty much 24 hours, then you get the chance to turn that around and send it back to us. Once nominations are closed, that's the time period when it's really busy for us to try and sort those nominate, sort all those profiles out. So the pressure is on at that point, so we're not going to have too much time after that for people to be making wholesale changes. Okay? With the translations, so you can have 150 words in English and you can have 150 words in Tareo. And you have to provide that translation, but we then check it to make sure that the Tareo is substantially the same. As we know, you know, Tareo has more words than the English, so it's a few issues there, but as long as it's substantially the same, then we'll be all good with that. And then with other languages, there are options to do that and it depends on how many languages as to what the word limit is on those that's set out in the section in the candidate handbook. So have a good look at that and you're better worked out if you wanted to use it in other languages. But English and Tareo being national languages, 150 words max. Okay? Once they're signed off for print, which will be a couple of weeks after close of nominations, the profiles will then go up on council's website for everyone to look at. Remember, contact details up there now and no physical address anywhere. We are keen on, sorry, the profiles electronically, don't really want a PDF, hard to copy and paste from PDF, Word doc or typed into the body of the email. And please don't give us ones that are handwritten. You'll be surprised what I get, handwritten ones, team's got to retype them, we've got to check them. Resource hungry, easy to stuff up a handwritten profile that's being retyped. Sure, you get a PDF to see what it's going to look like, but you know, still, please don't go there. Photos, you might recognise some of those. Taken in the last 12 months, just like my photo is, not. Taken last 12 months, remember, this is just the photo for your candidate profile statement, not the photo for your campaigning, just your profile statement. So passport size, taken last 12 months, head and shoulders shot, you can smile. Don't need to do the passport shot drug dealer look. But taken last 12 months and we check that. If Jennifer and her team think that the photo you've provided doesn't really look like you, we might be having a chat. And I'll get my IT person to delve into the metadata of the photo to see when it was actually taken, which we will do if we have any doubt. Yeah? Does the photo look like you? Is, it's got to be taken in the last 12 months. For your campaign, you can airbrush it up the wazoo if you like, but for your profile statement, I'd prefer not. All right? Remember, no hats, no glasses, no other people, no pets, no trees, no babies, no parrots. Nothing strange. No costumes, glasses are fine, but just be careful if you've got those ones that are, the dechromatic ones, what are they called? The ones that go darker when the light's brighter, just wait until they're readjusted so when you take it, it doesn't look like you're wearing sunglasses. Okay? Yeah, electronic, as high res as you can get. Preferably don't rip off a 72 DPI photo off your Facebook page, send it to us, which you know what it'll have and when we go to print it, it'll pixelate and you'll look like a fuzzy bear. When you get the PDF back, you'll soon recognise it and go, oh, it doesn't look too flash and we'll change it. Okay? Jennifer, you happy with that, photos? Interesting ones. Remember, no costumes. Like the infamous person in Tager Regional Council last time, slime monster, who stood as a candidate, gave me a photo of her as a slime monster. No, didn't accept it because the photo for the profile has to be of a real person so that we know that it is a real person. Ben? Correct, he has given me a normal photo. And is okay with that. Physical clown. In campaigning, he can use the clown as much as he likes. In the profile, a normal photo so that everyone can see that it is in fact a real person. Okay? You'll be surprised what we get. And here is a good example of what it's going to look like. My fictitious one from Imvaka City Council, but as you can see, my photo, not taken last 12 months, ignore that, but that's the format of how the name's going to look. First name lowercase, surname caps, then the affiliation, proven dedicated real, sounds like me. Pretty much anything you like, but can be nothing in there. And then it sends my principal place of residence is in the area that I'm standing or not. And I'm standing for these other elections if you are, then bang into the 150 words. Okay? Sorry? Oh, yeah. Thanks. Not quite, not in the last 12 months, but still. So you'll get, the PDF you get will be, you know, look like this pretty much. And you'll get the chance to check all of those key details to make sure that we've got them right. Because, you know, obviously we don't want the voting papers going out with a typo in a candidate's name. Here's the key chance to make sure we've got it right. Everyone's got it right. Okay? And council videos. First time that, once the council has done this, Porroa have done videos for the last couple of times. First time that, once the council has done this, Paurua have done videos for the last couple of times. Tonga City did them last time as well and had truckloads of hits on their videos. So another opportunity for people to learn about candidates. Ninety seconds. Three or four questions. And generic questions like, you know, why are you standing? What skills do you bring to the role? What are, what are you going to focus on for council in the next three years? Something generic like that, that everyone will know in advance. So once nominations closed, Jennifer and her team will flick an email to everyone with some instructions around this, what the questions are, what the booking process is. And we'll get everybody in to do them, probably in half an hour slots. Bang, 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 after each other, same lighting, same sound, same environment, same background, same, same, same level playing field. Captions for the questions as you answer them and then subtitles of the answers. Okay? If you want to have a look what they look like, you can go to the Tonga City Council website now and check out the ones that they've got up there from their election last year. They had seventy-six candidates, sixty-six candidates did their video, optional, don't have to. After they posted them, six of the other candidates came back and said, oh, they're better than I thought. Can we please do mine? Sure. No problem. Okay? Jennifer, you got anything you want to add on photos? Ever that? Huh? Good. Are you allowed? You're allowed to swear? No. Because that would be offensive. And that would be my call. Same as in your affiliation, can't be offensive. When? No, no, be after closing nominations, the week after, the week after the closing nominations. Is that right?
Yeah, no, that's right. Um, we are actually, because we've actually got a number of nominations in already, we are looking at seeing if we might actually do one run ahead of time. We're just trying to make sure we've got the best possible time in case everybody says that they want to. So we will actually be looking at doing that a couple of days before close of nominations. If there's sufficient nominees to make that worthwhile. So we're just responding to what you all do really.
How many candidates we're looking at? How many candidates?
I mean, do we expect altogether? I'd probably, yeah, eighty to.
So that'd be a big job.
Maybe.
Okay. So check out TCC website if you want to have a look. Pretty much most of the councils will be doing these around the country. Not everyone, but most. Okay, campaigning. Try and stay away from this space, but a few things you need to be aware of, a few do's and don'ts. Remember, can't use council resources in your campaigning, can't use council's branding, council's logo, council's colours, councillor's badges, uh, council buildings, can't take a photo of yourself standing outside the council building with the council's name in the background. Can't come into the council chambers wearing a Vote For Me t-shirt. Rock up to a council meeting, holding up a Vote For Me sign. It goes on council's live stream, council's live stream is council's audience, not candidate's audience. So be careful of those things. If you're unsure, ask Jennifer or I about that. Remember, you've got to record your election expenses during the three month period, which we'll talk about shortly. And every item of campaign material, I mean, every item of campaign material has to have that little authorisation statement on it. Authorized by candidate's name or their agent and contact method, not physical address. Short, sharp, authorized by name, email or mobile or web address or QR code to one of those. Okay? Doesn't matter how big or small it is. Can be pretty tiny, for example. Could be in the corner. Down here, little sticky label with skinny writing down the side. On every item, pamphlets, pamphlets, posters, balloons, hats, t-shirts, badges, a little writing on the badge, billboards, everything, every item of campaigning, cars, business cards. Pretty much everything. Facebook page on the platform. After the end of a radio advert. Doesn't need to be on every post or email, provided the platform has it on it. Like your Facebook page. Just to remember there about the ASA. So if you're doing a paid for media advert on a billboard or in the newspaper or on an advert and on the radio, be careful about what you say and be truthful or factual about that. If you do something in a paid media that someone thinks is not correct, factually correct, then they can take a complaint to the Advertising Standards Authority, who will investigate it and may make you change it if they've found it to be correct. Paid advertising, not social media. ASA, don't get involved in social media, just as much as I don't. Paid candidate advertising. The usual rules of defamation apply. If you believe you've been defamed by someone or slandered, then you can take action accordingly. Not something for the electoral officer to be worried about though. Social media, key thing there is remember, council's social media audience is council's social media audience, not the candidates. So you can't, no one can make comments about candidates or election hearing on council's channel. Moderate it, check it, delete it. If someone continued to do that, they would be blocked. Many of my councils actually stop the ability for anyone to make comments during the election period, eleven July, eleven October. Well, I think I'm not doing that as yet, but might have ramped up big time. Okay? So be mindful of that. This is from anyone. That's just, you know, voters or candidates, anyone who makes election hearing comments. Zapped. But what can you do? Sure. You can take council's posts and send them out to your audience. You can share them with the campaigning message if you want to. You can send it forward to your network as much as you like. You just can't do anything that goes back to council's feed, back to council's channel, because it's council's channel, council's audience, not a candidate's audience. So you can't rate, check in, reply, comment, review, all of those things that would then appear on council's feed. So simple premise, take your post, send it out, just don't go back. If you stick to that principle, we'll all be happy. You won't get a grumpy Warwick on the phone. Remember, it is against the legislation to take a photo of a completed voting paper and post that on the internet. Once you've marked it all, ranked your candidates, before you put in the envelope, you can't take a photo of it, post it online. Illegal for anyone, against legislation. Yeah.
You said they completed.
Completed. Got to be practical about it. As long as, as long as it's got a mark next to a candidate, when you're in a candidate box. You can take a snib of just a row of your name with a box and a one in it, but no one else, and post that. Okay? I'll show you what that looks like in a minute. Signs, oh, who put this slide in there? Try and ignore this one. Signs, my favourite topic. Not. Jennifer, did you sneak that in? Few issues with signs, locations, sizes, all of that stuff. Check the candidate handbook, make sure you get it right and talk to council's enforcement team about that. Not the electoral officer. Remember, the cost of the framing, holding up your sign is not an election expense. Nor whether screws is attached to, it's just the cost of the sign. And yes, you can use your signs from last time with a previous photo, no problem. And when you do that and your candid expense return just put, used twenty twenty-two signs, no cost, provided you recorded the cost last time. But if you put a banner across the corner of it, then yes, the cost of that banner would be a cost this time. Signwriting vehicles, no problems, you can do that now. Got to be authorised, of course, somewhere. But as far as costs go, if you had your car sign written a month ago and you were driving around for four months, the campaign period is three months, three months to four months, seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of the cost would be what you would put in your candid expense return. Okay? Donations. Yeah, sorry. You want to get back to that one? Pass. Good question. Question for council's enforcement department. We'll get to the bottom of that. But issues of signs at the size. Uh, I'm not sure about locations. They're taking locations, pretty much they can privately, public land. Yes. Yep, sure.
Very good. The question was, uh, what are the reasons why council might approve or disapprove of an electoral sign on public land? So to clarify, uh, my name's Shaun, I'm the strategic planning manager. I'm, uh, council staff. Uh, I'm a city planner. The, there are two sets of rules that apply to signs. The first set is those on private land, those are governed by the district plan and the rules depend on what zone you are putting it in. There is a second set of rules for, uh, public land. The first set of rules to bear in mind is when those signs can go up, just stated on this, on there. The second set is whether they contain, uh, any truly objectionable material. We are well aware that our role is to run the election and support the democratic process. It is not to become involved in it. So we're not looking to censor your signs. What we are looking to do is to ensure that they obey the city's planning regulations. So if you have any doubts about where you're putting signs, particularly on private land, my advice would be to speak to our planning technicians through the electoral offices. They will be able to advise you, for example, if it is a heritage area and there is a limit on the number of signs on a particular property or the length of time the signs can be kept up. Uh, but it's difficult to answer a specific question without knowing specific locations. That's more for the electoral officer, but I have seen those signs in the past and my answer would be that uh, from a planning point of view, those are perfectly acceptable. Uh, so those rules have always existed. Uh, we have always been very lenient in enforcing them because it's freedom, people's freedom of expression, that's a serious matter. In terms of when you can put it up on your fence, unless your fence is a heritage listed, that shouldn't be a problem. Uh, but they, what is happening is there is a temporary sign, there is a rule for temporary activities in the plan. So what we do as planners is recognise that this thing isn't always going to be there. So it doesn't make sense for it to go through a full resource consenting process. And so by putting them up early, what you risk is moving outside of that loophole that has been created in the planning regulations uh, in order to allow these things to occur without undue cost and process. Yes, but once it has been up for over a certain amount of time, which is twenty-eight days, it is not considered temporary. You could try doing that. The, uh, Yep, I know we're trying to get clarity here. In general, it is easier to stay within the twenty-eight days and clear, but I'm sure there are ways around those rules. Yes. Yes, and what we're doing is approving the uh, the size and duration of the sign. We're not approving the content of the sign. So I'll just make that very clear. Yeah, and I would just draw your attention to the difference between public land and private land because it's different regulations. Good. Yes, that's why we've given the twelfth of August as the date there because we've calculated it from the, uh, the twenty-eight days from voting opening. Sorry, there were some more questions? So the question was, if a shop owner wished to put up a sign or a flyer in the window, are they bound by these dates? One of the problems with city planning is you start answering questions like what is sign? So we try to be sensible about these things. If it's a flyer in the window, then that's not a sign. If it is a large sign that takes up the entire window of the shop, then you are likely to start triggering other rules in the plan based on the ability to see through uh, what's called, um, it active edge controls. That is very much a case by case basis because it depends on the, on the zoning of the land that you're looking to do and which street it's on. Not all streets have those controls. In general, if you want to put up a small sign, put up a flyer or put up a small sign in a window, then that is generally, that is generally okay. Yeah, so an A four and A three piece of paper. I wouldn't consider that to be a sign. So as a policy pla, sorry, the question was, what about a, a large billboard sized sign filling a shop window on, say, Cambridge Terrace? Uh, I'm a policy planner. I try to avoid giving direct determinations over particular applications. Uh, that's a resource consultant planner's job. However, uh, that again depends on the rules uh, and whether those active edge controls apply to Cambridge Terrace or not. So it depends on the regulations you're assessing against. Paid electronic signs or billboards generally fall under a consent regime that the billboard owner has already been through. So say the billboard on Vivian Street, that's probably the most prominent example. That has already been consented through the planning system and what you are doing is effectively renting space in a consented, uh, for a consented activity. In which case it's the electoral rules you need to obey, uh, the planning rules are already taken care of. Good.
Thanks, Shaun. You can see why my eyes glaze over when I put this slide up. It's a bit of a minefield, even more when you start talking about what Waka Katahi do on state highways. So be mindful of that as well, because if you do that, then they are very vigilant at taking down their signs that don't comply without consultation. But check with Shaun and his team, uh, if you've got specific queries about particular locations, as he said. Interesting space to be in, one not for me. All right, donations. This is a bit messy too. Uh, donations legislation is not very clear, but in simple terms, every donation over three hundred, you have But in simple terms, every donation over three hundred, you have to declare. If you know who it's from. Or you can reasonably work it out. So if someone gives you five hundred dollars and says, here, this is for your campaign, but I don't even want to know, the answer is, sorry, you can't. Once I know who you are, I have to declare the name of the donor. If it is truly anonymous, I don't know how you're going to get an anonymous one, but if it was truly anonymous, then maximum limit of fifteen hundred, because over that, you've got to give it to the council. Okay? Remember, give a little... What's the other one? GoFundMe, those guys, they don't meet the donor requirements. So you can't use them for funding your campaign. Don't meet donor details. So there's the expense limits that you have to stick to, including GST. These were set in 2001, never changed, is what it is. And if you're standing in more than one position, it's the higher limit that applies, not both of them. So, you know, the mayor and the ward, sixty K, not ninety K. Or seventy K. Expenses. We've talked a little bit about that, three months period, got to record your expenses and your expense return. Provide that to the council after the election. Goes on council's website for seven years, public record, public document. You can go and look at what was up there from three years ago. Set it in the handbook, period eleven July to eleven October. As an example, you could have put a full-page ad in the Dom Post on the tenth of July. Full, great big colour ad, outside the three-month period, not part of election expenses. Because it's a daily paper. If you put it in a monthly paper on the same day, yes, it would, because it goes into the period. It's not about when you paid for the activity, it's about when the activity occurs. Even if you paid for your signs three months ago, I go up August, that's when the activity occurs, that's when you have to record the expense for that item. No. Just recording, just the item, you know, what it is, description and the amount. I don't need the receipts. Yes, you should probably keep the receipts, just in case someone complains and a police complaint comes out of it, and they come knocking on your door, but I don't need them, I'm not under arrest. Remember, it's not my job to check what's in someone's return, I don't care what's in it. My job is just to take it, give it to Jennifer, and put it up on council's website. Yeah, prorata. Yeah, so the question was, if you're doing flyers, and you've already distributed some of them, but not all of them, do you prorata? You prorata for the period of the activity. So if you had them out beforehand, yeah, that's how you deal with it. And just be practical about it. If you're doing something with another candidate, you know, you're aggregating with a mayor and a ward candidate, for example, then you can prorata that cost to between the two candidates, or three candidates, whoever may be involved. Same deal, don't need to worry about that. No. Yep. That's right. Oh, sorry, so the question was, do you need to record, you know, food or expenses for people that are helping you out? And the answer to that is no. It's expenses for a campaign activity. So what I, and what I mean by that, this is a very good question, but what I mean is an item that has a call to action. That's what I mean by a campaign activity item, a call to action. Okay? No. Does lead me into election expenses though. Thank you for that thought. Be careful about that though, because, you know, you can meet some friends for a coffee at a cafe, or take out a group of volunteers that have helped you, and shout them lunch or coffee or something. That's fine, but what you can't do is go, here, I'll show you this coffee, if you vote for me. The moment you associate food, drinks with a call to action, if you vote for me, that is treating, that is against legislation, it's off to the police. Okay? I get calls about this all the time. What is treating? Treating is a call to action with an item. Same with bribery, you can't give away an item of value, a pen, a fridge magnet, that could be used for another purpose. Against the legislation, off to the policeman. My job with those is just to take those campaigns and send them straight to the police, yeah? No, because the person can still use that on their fridge, later. Even if it's got your name on it. So fridge magnet is not, it is bribery, you can't use a fridge magnet. Sticker is okay? Sticker's okay, so the question was, can you use a sticker? Yes, provided it's authorised. Sticker's no problem, it's something that can be used for another purpose, putting things on a fridge, writing with something else. Okay? Calendar, used for something else. So, here's an example of good sign, and a not-so-good sign. Yes, you can have your box with a number one beside it. We've got about five minutes to go. And then the authorisation, although that's an authorisation with the address in it, which you don't need, of course, can just be authorised by contact name, ah, sorry, contact method. And then the other one, you can't have that where it's got your name and other candidates, without a rank or with numbers or a cross. Because then that's showing people how to vote, an imitation voting paper, against the legislation. Off to the policeman. I've had that happen before, a couple of times. Off to the police, prosecuted. Happened in Carpathia many moons ago. Here's a good example of a car, sign written, had an authorisation on it, anybody know who that is? It's in the media, a few years back. Horrified when a district council parked right outside the front door of the council building. Council car park, council premise. The mayor had a car park underneath the building that he could use. He parked it right by the front door, so anyone walking in would see his car for a promotion. No, Michael, move it. Well, he did, parked it down the street. It had the Scottish authorisation statement on the back of it, so that was okay, but I would have asked him about that as well if he hadn't. He might remember that. Sounds like me, if I stood for council, I'll do my best, but I can't promise anything. This was just someone in Toorong who put the sign up at the start of the voting period as a joke. Council thought it was great, so they left it up and went viral from there. Bit of entertainment. Orange bins, orange voting bins. Jennifer and my, and my beloved bins. Jennifer's the queen of orange voting bins in the country. How many you got? More than fifty? Supermarkets, council premise, train station, airport, all sorts of places. List will be on council's website, be in the candidate, the voting guide booklet. And will be on comms all over the shop. We're keen on you using these. Last Lampton by-election, we had eighty-one per cent of votes came back through these orange bins. Toorong's election last year, we had eighty-five per cent. Only fifteen per cent through the postal network. Much faster to get to us if they come through here, so we're really keen for you to promote the use of these to anyone and everyone. Okay, no problems with you pushing that out there, yeah? Yes. So they are pulled in at exactly midday on election day, there is someone at each bin to make sure they do that, listening to the radio. All under as much as we can CCTV, chained to appropriate pillar or something. Bike locked, cleared six to eight times during the voting period. Surprisingly, we hardly ever get any rubbish or receipts in them or anything. Haven't had any issues around the country. This time it will be about twelve hundred across the country. They'll be really easy to find, because Jennifer and team are going to tart them up with Medge Simpson's hairdo thing at the back, you won't be able to miss them. All right, electoral roll, nearly at the end. As I said, pre-election roll out now, final roll we use to send the voting papers to. If you haven't updated your address, please do so quickly before the first of August. Easy to do, vote.nz. Check that you've got the right address, your nominated seconders have got the right address, and all your friends have got the right address. Because if not, the voting paper will go to the wrong place. You've got till then to do it, first of August, after that, it's too late, and then you have to do a special vote. Come into the council office at various places. That'll be well publicised, easy to do, only takes a couple of minutes, does require a declaration form, but no great drama. All good to go. We'll do about, last time we did four thousand? Four thousand special votes, which was one of the biggest ones in the country. I'm thinking we might do a bit more this time. A big job, but easy to do if you need to. Then, yep? You want to answer that?
Shaun, so it's on our website at the moment, so we'll have the hub, the election hub will be in the CBD at the Tiawee Library. And then in the final week of voting, we'll also have special voting hubs in each of the four geographic wards, so Waitehi, Kilburne, Newtown, and the other one.
So yes, five for the last ten days, actually? Okay?
The reason for that, and the reason for that is because otherwise we want everyone to put their, return their their voting papers by mail, you can do that up until the Tuesday the sixth, so it's really around coverage for that final week. Up until that point, people will be returning them either through the bins or through the post, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you can, you can ring up in the first week and we can post out special voting papers to you as well. But there is a declaration to involve, so this is a little bit tricky. If you come at the council, we'll be done in a couple of minutes. Oh, sorry. So the results, here's your deal, hit the button, two o'clock-ish. Forward to the council, the council and their team will then ring everybody with the result, round about three o'clock on the day. That won't include votes in the orange bins from the Friday evening and the Saturday morning. We'll get those late Saturday evening, process those, and have the free preliminary result on the Sunday. Maybe Sunday afternoon, possibly before then. And then the final result, a few days later, once all the specials have been processed. Paul? Was those four other locations in each of the wards that they can go to, that'll be well publicised? Yeah.
So the question was, what were the five locations where their people will be able to do a special vote in the final week? That will be the Tiawee Library on Brandon Street, the Karori Library, the Waitehi Libraries, the Kilburne Library, and the Newtown Library. So everybody's got a special voting hub in their ward that they should be able to get to, that's the plan, thank you.
Excellent, thanks Jennifer, yeah? Shall I say it again? You mean scrutineers? Yeah. So, all the voting papers for our forty-seven councils go to our centralised processing centre in Christchurch. Where we'll do about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand voting papers during that voting period. Candidates can appoint scrutineers for someone in Christchurch to go to that processing centre and look at the processing of voting after midday on election day. So scrutineers can only observe the process after midday on election day. Prior to that, when we're, what's called early processing, that's all overseen by a couple of JPs, and is a well-audited process. And scrutineers can't see that process. But after midday, they can, but in reality, these days, there's not much point, because we hit the button and thought down our chime, soon after midday, and we release the result anyway. Scrutineers that do come along, we do get a few, not very many. They're not there to get access to the results, they're there to see the process if they wish. But it's electronic and not a lot to see.
Just make the point about STV voting. So for those of, you know, who've done first-past-the-post voting, or helped with general elections, you know, we count them on-site, it's delightful. STV voting is a machine-based process. If that makes sense, that that's all scanned into a whole hangar full of voting machines.
Entirely electronic, scanned in software, run over it to extract the preferences, and then put them into the STV calculator. All electronic. Okay? Paul, you are? Then after that, council's inaugural meeting. Ceremony, big deal, hopefully. Formal process, oath of allegiance, followed by an in-depth induction process. So those first couple of months after the election will be very busy for new elected members, yeah? Oath of allegiance to the oath of allegiance, I'm not sure of the ideas of the oath of allegiance, but part of the formal process. King, I guess? Don't know. There's the documents that you can all check out. You've got the pre-election report here, the candid handbook, all on the website, along with the nomination papers. So check all that out. As I said, please make sure you read the candid handbook in detail. And here's the last slide, what time are we looking? Ah, it's about what I thought it would be. So, yep, no online voting. One day. And when that'll be? Lots of orange bins, more than fifty. We'll be promoting those big time, and as candidates, you can do that, please, that'll help us. Please do not leave lodging a nomination till the last minute. Keep yourself safe, and keep things positive, and we'll all be good to go. Well, thank you for coming along this morning, that's all that I wanted to say. Happy to take any questions or come up and chat to me individually. But thank you for your time and good luck. Any, any other questions that you want to take now? Yeah? Sure. Yep. Easy.
Yes, we've got, we've got a room booked in case anybody wants to do it now. Got your name on it first on, I'm sure.
Yeah. I didn't catch that, say that again? Oh, and the authorising statement, that can be a candidate or their agent, so a campaign manager. Just has to be a real person, that someone can contact to ask about that candidate's campaigning item. Okay? All right? Well, thank you very much. Thank you to the live stream man, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to the live stream man. Thank you.